Welcome, everybody. We're in a call to order, the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel?
Here.
Wasowski? Weber?
Here.
Lunskey?
Here.
Cavami?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Andveen?
Here.
All right, we have a call.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance, led by Mr. Roberts and the Grand Forks Honor Flight.
(Inaudible)
All right, thank you. Mr. Roberts is going to give us an update and then what the path forward looks like, and I think he's got some notes there, too, so please feel free, sir.
Well, good evening. I'm Don Roberts, 20 years in the Marine Corps, and I've been with the Honor Flight about five years. Last year, we had a big accomplishment. We got one out of Grand Forks. The rest of them have been out of Fargo. We've maybe got six to 10 veterans out of the northern part of Minnesota, North Dakota, to go on these flights. Last year, we had 112. I hope to have 120 in October. So all we need is a lot of help. The Honor Flight is, we take veterans to DC. That's our mission. You get three days, two nights, everything is paid for. We don't get any money from the government. Everything is volunteered and raising money any way we can. I want to just have a couple guys come up and talk to us, each part of the heart.
Hi, I'm Warren Strandell. I was privileged to be on the flight that left April last year. On that flight, there were 183 people on the flight. Eighty-four of them were veterans, four from World War II, 71 from the Korean era, and nine from Vietnam years. Everything on those Honor Flights, like Don said, is done by volunteers. Those volunteers, there were 85 of them on that trip, of that 183, they had 80 wheelchairs that they would take veterans around that couldn't walk, and you were offered a wheelchair whether you could walk or not. They were really trying to recruit you to ride rather than walk. None of the volunteers, and that includes doctors and nurses, there were, we had four tour buses, and each bus had one doctor and at least one nurse, and those were volunteers just like everybody else. Nobody takes any pay for any of this. Chief among the volunteers, of course, was Don, and Betty, wherever she is, Betty. Anyway, on our trip, we were driven past the Capitol and the White House, and we had stops at such places as the Fort McHenry National Monument. That's where the Star Spangled Banner was conceived. And also, one of the other major stops was the Arlington National Cemetery, where you could watch the changing of the guard. And then other memorials that we stopped at included the Iwo Jima, the Franklin Delano Roosevelt, the Air Force, the Lincoln, the Korean, the Vietnam, World War I and World War II, all of those memorials. And we also visited the National Archives. That's where you could see under glass the original Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, along with other documents. I was able to find the Cliff Cushman name on the wall at the 625-acre Arlington National Cemetery. There was graves there of over 400,000 US servicemen and women. And that's, when you look out at those, at all those white grave sites, I tell you, that's a humbling, very, well, it kind of toks you up totally, you can't believe that, well, freedom is not free, and it was very evident there. On a more different note, probably a little later one, well, moving along on our bus tour, there were four buses from our group, and as we passed one area, there was a porta potty there. And our bus driver, Eddie, pointed it out, and then he reported that on one of the past drives by that site, that a Marine officer, one like Don, had made the note that that porta potty was dubbed the Jane Fonda Memorial.[433.75][433.75](Laughter). And he further said that if it was, you know, if you were so inclined, you could leave a deposit.[445.19][445.19](Laughter). The trip will always be one of my best experiences. As it ended, I was just about ready to re-up.[453.94][453.94](Laughter).
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and guests. My name is Peggy Banial, and I am with the Daughters of the American Revolution, Progress Chapter in Grand Forks. Our chapter has done many things to help our veterans, and we were involved with the opening and dedication of the Veterans Memorial Park, and it's a beautiful park, I think, so thank you for that. We were, last year, we were part of the Honor Flight, and we were able to be with them as they came in, the veterans, as they come and greet them. The excitement was just unreal, it was just, you know, people were so excited. So we assisted them getting on the plane and everything. And so when we came back, the welcome home was magnificent. The veterans didn't expect that. So when they got off, there was a lot of smiles, but there were a lot of tears, but full of emotion. It was just exciting. And so the Daughters of the American Revolution, we were there, we were great, and we, and so many other volunteers were there to assist. I, a lot of, on your chair, or by your table, there was, I put a copy of the National Defender, and what that is, it's a copy of one of our members wrote an article about the Honor Flight of what we did, and it went to Washington, DC, to the National. And with that, there's 190,000 DAR members that will read this, and knowing what an outstanding job Grand Forks did to our, for our veterans. So we're very excited about our next Honor Flight, and our chapter plans to help Mr. Roberts, as well, you know, as much as we did last fall, and we'll do it again. And we'll do whatever needs to be done. The Grand Forks community has always supported many events, and the support given to last year's Honor Flight was a huge success. With the upcoming Honor Flight in October, your help and support is greatly appreciated for another successful Honor Flight. I thank you for your time.[598.01][598.01](Applause).
Hi, I'm Delaney. Don and Betty are my parents, so I've been pretty active with everything that's been going on. I have been asked to be a volunteer on two of the flights, and we are dedicated to all the schedule. I mean, every minute is filled with whatever a volunteer has to do. This last trip, I had the opportunity of taking one of our veterans, I was a pusher, you know, we pushed them all the way around. We stopped at the Vietnam Memorial, and he had a name of a person that he wanted to have etched. So we pulled up to the area, we got it, of course, it was way on the bottom, and I got down on my hands and knees, and I held him as he held the paper. We etched this veteran's name on there. He and I both sat there in tears because it was such a memorable thing. So it's not just a lifetime trip for them, it's also a lifetime trip for ourselves. It's just amazing. Thank you.[671.13][671.13](Applause).
I hope to have 120 vets on this flight from here to the Canadian border. We are going over to Bemidji. We had people from Leeds, North Dakota, I'm the last one. But all the help from the mayor, secretary, I need you all the time, the chief of police, the sheriff, fire department, the airport, dressed in red, white, and blue flags from Highway 2 to Highway 2, balloons all over the place, we impressed Fargo. All the flights have been coming out of Fargo for the last 12 years. Grand Forks got one, now we got another one. We did a good job. So all we need, we have about 1,700 vets that we've already took, but right now, time is an essence. We lose about 1,000 vets every day for Agent Orange that we're all suffering under, and time is an essence. So I'm proud to be here, enjoying this group. Thank you.[754.54][754.54](Applause).
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I think that night, when everybody came back, the atmosphere in that airport was phenomenal. And I said this then, a lot of those were Korean and Vietnam War vets, and that was the reception they deserved 50 years ago, and they didn't get, and they finally got it here in Grand Forks. So thank you for everything that you can do, and I think absolutely our staff and our council is at your disposal, anything that you need to help make that happen, and we'll definitely get the word out to help fundraise. So thank you for that, sir.[787.07][787.07](Pause). First announcement here is coming from Environmental Health on radon awareness. Radon is a real health issue and is the second-leading cause of lung cancer. Local levels of radon are two to six times greater than the EPA's recommended level of action. It's a colorless, odorless radioactive gas resulting from the breakdown of uranium in the soil, and you have to test to be able to know how much you have present. This is a problem with solutions that can reduce the levels in existing homes and build into new construction. So I know we've got a number of tests that are going to be available to the public, so we ask that you, if you get the chance, please test your home and look into remediation systems if levels exceed two PCI-L, and recommend remediation if levels exceed four. We do have a limited supply, so if you get a chance, please stop by the Public Health Building on the third floor of the county building and pick up a radon kit, and then you can bring that in and figure out where the levels are at. Last Wednesday, I had the privilege of going over and speaking at the community high school. We had the whole entire student body there in the lunchroom area, grades questions. They wanted to know what it was like today in the life of the mayor. We got to talk about a lot of questions, whether it was Rhodes Mall, the Columbia Mall, lots of other issues. We even talked about hockey a little bit, so it was a really great, great event. Just today, I was over at King's Walk at Eagles Crest there as part of Sir Thomas Freedom Week program. There was a flag ceremony, and the three winners of the local elementary school essay contest, I got to read their essays, so a pretty special day. And then just today, we had German exchange students, there must have been about 25 of them. This is the first time they've come back. It's a 20-year partnership that the Grand Forks High Schools have with Germany, so they switch back and forth. They spend three weeks with the families and host, not only the students that go there, but when they come back, the families host them. And interestingly enough, they're about halfway through their trip, and I got to meet one of the students, was actually the son of the mayor from their hometown in Germany, called Rheimsick Amnekar, which is near Stuttgart, I was told, so definitely an enjoyable time and get to see those students and their thoughts, and they were all loving Grand Forks, so that was good to hear. Finally, just so everybody's aware, this will be the last meeting here in council chambers for a while. They're doing a remodel, so demolition will begin as soon as tomorrow, so we'll see quite a different look going into the future. So we'll be over at the Hive probably for the next couple of months. What do we expect, Todd, on the construction timeline?
Five months.
Five months? Okay, so it's going to be a little while over there. So mark your calendars, that's where the next council and committee of the whole meetings will be. All right, from there, item two, citizen comments.
Yep, so I have a total of nine comments. Todd Leek?
Mr. Leek, please.
Mayor, city council members and staff, my name is Todd Leek. My address is 2371 10th Avenue Northeast, Emerytown, North Dakota. I farm 1,800 acres in Grand Forks County, North Dakota, in Fairfield, Chester, and Oakville Townships. I am a member of the Emerytown Farmers Co-op Elevator Company and Thompson Farmers Co-op Elevator Company, both located in Grand Forks County. I served on the Board of Directors of Emerytown Farmers Co-op Elevator Company for 10 years and was Secretary of the Board for three years. I am a past president of Grand Forks County Farmers Union. Since the withdrawal of the Foo-Fang proposal, there have been comments from various parties on the possibility to replace the Foo-Fang plant with another ag processing facility. If this means to subsidize a different facility, whether a wet corn mill or another type of processor with public funds on the same scale as the Foo-Fang proposal, then the issue of unfair competition practices toward local grain elevators still exists. The local elevators in Grand Forks County and surrounding counties have built their businesses and facilities without subsidy from government. These subsidies represent an uneven economic playing field and unfair competition to the existing elevator companies. Farmers Elevator of Reynolds, Columbia Grain Company of Arvila, Thompson Elevator, Honeyford Elevator, Columbia Grain Company are all load and send 114-car shuttle unit trains of corn by rail, which represents a large portion of their grain sales business. Smaller elevator companies such as Emerytown supply grain to those unit train facilities. This unit train export business is a mature market with infrastructure to the West Coast and to the Great Lakes terminal facilities to export grain globally. The Northern Plains grain industry, with elevators stretching all the way to the West Coast, of which our local elevators are a part, are intricately connected to that supply chain. To build subsidized ag industrial processors will cut the capacity of Grand Forks's regional elevators to compete in the unit train export industry. If through subsidized competition they lose that sector of their business, these local elevators could lose the profit margins to stay viable, depriving local family farmers of the local, of a local ready market for corn, wheat, soybeans, canola, sunflowers, and barley. Family farmers would also lose essential agricultural services such as fertilizer procurement and application provided by their local elevator companies. It may seem counterintuitive, but these ag processing facilities often hurt farmers, not help them. The grain elevators are the last economic pillars in the small towns in Grand Forks County and surrounding counties. To diminish or lose their unit train loading business would stress those businesses. Economic subsidies, including tax incentives, have not only eliminated retail in regional small towns, but have also devastated healthcare facilities, service industries, and as a consequence, strangled their ability to attract families, enhance schools, build housing, and sustain their communities. This is happening all around North Dakota, as I am sure that you have seen in your North Dakota travels. There is a difference between economic development and economic cannibalism. I am afraid that the EDCs around the area have been practicing the latter. I encourage the city and the EDC to look out of the box and attract businesses that do not directly compete with established businesses, and leverage the assets of the state's flagship university to bring 21st century industry to Grand Forks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leek.[1239.33][1239.33](Applause).
There we go. All right. So next we got Dexter Perkins.
Mr. Perkins, please.
Hi, guys. I'm Dexter Perkins, 5571 Charlie Ray Drive. And I want to apologize in advance if it sounds like I'm reading, because I probably will be reading tonight, and I don't like doing that, but I want to make sure I get some things correct. The Grand Forks Regional Economic Development Corporation, EDC, is an organization representing businesses in Grand Forks. The leaders include successful businesspeople, all of whom want to see a growing and vibrant Grand Forks. But the EDC is only one of many special interest groups in our town. And recent developments convince me that the connection between city government and the EDC is just inappropriate and causing a whole bunch of problems for our community. I checked out the EDC website and some other sources and find that the EDC is committed to bringing more companies and people to Grand Forks. This includes spending taxpayers' money to subsidize private undertakings. And that vision's understandable, giving the EDC perspective, but it's not what the vast majority of our citizens want. Ask 99% of the people in town, and they will tell you that a corn plant was not going to improve their life. And they'll tell you that a growing population isn't going to improve their life. Grand Forks citizens are more concerned about mundane things such as better wages, affordable daycare, school lunches, affordable homes. Their interests just don't jive with the EDC interests. And you know, it has never been shown that a bigger city will help solve any of those problems, address the concern of regular citizens. I looked it up this afternoon. Our population has grown by 25% in the past 20 years. Are our citizens 25% better off? Have salaries gone up? Are houses more affordable? No. But we do have more traffic, more closed businesses, and more empty stores. Mayor Bishinsky, you're on the EDC Board of Directors, but you also have great influence on city operations, and you run the city council meetings where EDC projects are discussed and voted on. This is a huge conflict of interest. We elected you to work for the citizens of Grand Forks, not the Economic Development Corporation. And I suggest, if you wish to continue as mayor, you must resign from the Board of Directors of the EDC, or if you wish to continue on that board, resign as mayor. You can't do both. It's just wrong. Unfortunately, the corrupt relationship between city government and the EDC involves more than just the mayor. For example, our city growth fund includes five members, two are from the EDC. Yet, the growth fund committee makes many decisions directly related to EDC activities, so having those EDC members on the committee is simply inappropriate. And if the EDC people are going to be on those committees, why not representatives of other special interest groups? Why not the Farm Bureau, Global Friends, Grand Forks County Citizens Coalition, the Audubon Society, any of the many other special interests in town that believe they want to have a better city and are working to that end? As I prepared my comments earlier today, I tried to figure out the relationship between the city and the Economic Development Corporation. I couldn't do it. I went to the Grand Forks Economic Development website, and it's very hard to interpret, figure out what it says. There is no clear line of division between city operations and EDC operations, and it appears that the two entities share resources and personnel, and that the city subsidizes EDC operations. And it seems to me that the intimacy between the EDC and the city government explains many of the economic failures we've had in recent years. It's just not the Foo-Fang fiasco. Consider that the Red River Bio Refinery opened in 2020, and at one point Keith Lund, the CEO of the EDC, bragged that it was the most successful project he'd ever worked on. And he must be eating his words now because the bio refinery is closed and cannot pay its bills. And the Grand Forks Growth Fund has a history of spending money on businesses that fail. For example, in 2021, the fund loaned $269,000 to a cryptocurrency corporation, a corporation that was never going to produce any valuable product, and a corporation that is now bankrupt. I have no doubt that the EDC will continue to lobby for business development in Grand Forks, and they should. They must, however, be completely separate from city government, because you guys, mayor and city council, have to be able to judge their proposals and be objective about it.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
I'm just about done. Just two more comments, if you will let me do it. Last year, a city council member recused herself from Foo-Fang matters because she worked for an engineering firm that might have benefited from the Foo-Fang project going forward. And recently, the publisher of our local paper resigned from the EDC Board of Directors, citing a possible conflict of interest. The actions of Junie Mauch and Cory Wenzel are very admirable, but the apparent corruption here in city government far, far outshines what's going on at AE2S and the Grand Forks Herald. So my question is, what are you guys going to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.[1691.25][1691.25](Applause).
Sean Gauclair?
Mr. Gauclair, please.
Good evening, Mayor Bishinsky, council members. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about trust, and this is originated by my friend Frank Maticek, who attended the full BRIC meeting, and it sounds like there's a significant gap between the Grand Forks Air Force Base and the city of Grand Forks. And as a member citizen from Stephen, Minnesota, I also see there's a gap in trust. So I'd like to approach this, if I could serve on the council for one day, and I have my comments at the end of the meeting, this would be my comments. Mayor Bishinsky, fellow council members, and most importantly, the citizens and members of Grand Forks. It's the citizen government, not ours, and we, as the mayor and council, need to do our job of representing Grand Forks citizens. The positions we hold are privileged, granted to us by the citizens of Grand Forks. It's not a right, but a self, not a right, but self-interest individually or collectively ahead of those who are elected to represent and serve. Dexter represented the EDC, excellent example. We have not done our job in all matters related to Foo-Fang, governance, embedded trust with the Grand Forks Air Force Base and our community. Without a doubt, we, as your council, have not allowed our citizens to be listened to and be heard in all matters Foo-Fang. Contrast that with Foo-Fang representation. They were allowed to tell, show, and sell the community about themselves with zero accountability, direct citizen engagement. accountability, direct citizen engagement. The Grand Forks Fufang story ended by the United States Air Force stating, "The proposed project presents a significant threat to national security, both near and long-term risks of significant impact to operations here." Let that sink in about the partnership initially proposed and culture due diligence. Furthermore, you wanted to have over $100 million to an adversary of the United States. Think about that for veterans who served. They fought against adversaries. We, as your city government, need to start listening and taking appropriate actions to rebuild the trust with the United States Air Force Base, United States Air Force, Grand Forks Air Force Base, and the community of Grand Forks. Ann Bailey, a seasoned and well-respected journalist of AgWeek. Ann Bailey said at all and best recent editorial titled, "Grand Forks Handling a Fufang Milling Project Is A Perfect Example Of What Not To Do." The editorial focused on how officials from Grand Forks, Fufang, and the EDC repeatedly, disrespectfully, and blatantly failed to engage the citizen, journalists, essentially anyone who held opposing view to the Fufang project. I had also included both Senator Hovind Kramer, United States Air Force Base, and the Grand Forks Air Force Base in the above mention. Frankly, as a council, the editorial's black ink on white paper. It's factual, true, embarrassing, and we need to own it. We need to own it first by apologizing to those we hurt and the trust we destroyed. Next, and most importantly, as council mayor, we need to start the change today in how we engage community members we represent. We, as the council mayor, need to earn their trust and respect back. Thus, let's start now. It's my time, as your equals, both in responsibility and governance. Thus, to be addressing above. I want to hear from citizens on the Fufang concerns, way to improve our government and trust with the base and Grand Forks community. I want those citizens' comments, questions, and answers to be on record with both video and tape. Thus, please, citizens, approach the mic and let's go. Let me and the other government officials do our job by listening, understanding, recording, and taking actions as your elected officials begin earning your trust and respect back. When you're done speaking and feel you have been both listened to and also heard, we will stop, and only then. Thus, if you're good, I'm good. Let's go, citizens. All right. How many of you have had any sort of plan to deal with the Grand Forks Air Force Base and the trust issue tonight? Anyone? I'm deeply disappointed in the governance. I do. I'd like to talk to about it at the end of the meeting. With that in mind, please take my comments seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Gaucler.
Okay, next we've got Allison Spicer.
Ms. Spicer, please.
Good evening. Tonight, I just have a few things. Todd, if you can't find that email that I was referring to, I can get that for you at any time. Question, what type of visas do the 11 individuals from Fufang working out of the Center for Innovation have?
I don't think that's a federal government requirement.
They don't have a visa?
The federal government handles immigration.
Oh, okay.
Not the city government.
So you don't know about, if they have visas?
Federal government handles immigration.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Do you know if these individuals have access to, like, the wet lab there?
I don't know what the wet lab is, and that'd be a good question for the University of North Dakota.
Okay. I can ask them. Thank you. So the city has now spent a few million dollars on this project, right? Is that coming out of your guys' salaries? Your salary? Any of yours? Because it's not coming out of mine. I did not do due diligence on this project. I've been doing this for 14 months. I gave you all the information that you needed. Don't dare take that money out of my taxes or taxpayers' money in Grand Forks, North Dakota. And Brandon, you did an interview like two weeks ago with Fox News, right? It was all live. You lied the whole time. You never had her back. You did interviews stating that this was going to be so great. It's going to bring so many jobs. You did a video with the EDC. This is a great thing. Fufang's going to be great. You lied the whole time. Fox News, he lied. So if you want a real interview, ask someone that's been here for 14 months dealing with it. Another question for you, Brandon. Who brought you here? Was it Burgum? Was it maybe Hovind's, one of his little trips to Astana? Did he ever come over there to see you?
You're asking if somebody brought me here?
Yes.
My family brought me here. My college career brought me here. But thank you for asking.
Nothing to do with that, over in Astana?
You're claiming that a state or a federal official came while I was playing hockey and recruited me to come back to Grand Forks?
It's just a question.
Okay, I'm just answering.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Because we all know that you're like Burgum's little golden boy, right? And that right now, all you're doing is just PR to make this whole thing go away. We're not dumb, Brandon. We can see right through it. And hey, JT, Pitchfork Nation, that's all you could come up with? Like, come on, buddy. Got to be a little more creative than that. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Spicer.
Mr. Spicer, please.
Good evening. Get to the point first, something that just came when I got here. Kind of a bad night for me, because the Honor Flight gentlemen were here, the veterans that we've thrown under the bus. We come and we say the Pledge of Allegiance and a flag, and when I come and say the Pledge of Allegiance of a flag in this room, I get a knot in my stomach because of what happened prior to this, a year and three months ago, that this city council brought to our town. Not a shining example. If this is what's a shining example of creating this stuff to bring in a Chinese Communist Party business, and then supporting them all the way along, and putting, not only supporting them, but putting on the backs of the taxpayers of this community, I don't know why you guys are still here. I really question that. Every day, I wake up and I say, what gives them the gall to do what they've done to this city? This black mark, not this shining example, because you're what you call a good example of a bad example. That's where we come from.
Please address the council.
I'm addressing everybody here. Don't tell me what to do like you always think you can. You're the mayor. You're not the guy that tells me what to do. Let's clear the air, okay? I know you don't like me. I don't like you. Now, let's move on. This is about the pond. I was here four or five months ago. I gave, I gave the information that we do not need a pond. This is for everybody listening, okay? We have a diversion ditch that's less than three blocks away from all of these properties. We have a river that's about less than four blocks away from us. We have a coulee that's approximately six blocks away. We have a main highway with two ditches on both sides. And all of this is connected to the fact that no longer, you had another pond built less than a quarter mile away from us. So this thing about the pond, let me read this, what Mr. Phelan quoted. This is a quote from Mr. Phelan in the High Plains Reader. "Grand Forks currently building infrastructure such as Stormwater Pond to help support Fufang's needs." That's a direct comment from this guy right here. This pond was not built for our needs, okay? Now, make another comment about the pond. This is from the annexation papers that they did with SNS Transport that incited this whole thing from the beginning, because he had been dealing with the city for approximately two years to get a permit to start a business which you wouldn't support. Okay? Somehow or another, you twisted and wrangled him around for two years, and then here we end up with the Fufang project, and all of a sudden, he submits to be an annexed end. Here's part of that annexation agreement. "If Fufang does not construct a proposed wet corn milling plant, a stormwater holding pond and outfall structure will still be constructed, but at a smaller scale. The cost expenses and fees, including legal fees and land acquisition costs to design and construct such reduced stormwater pond and outfall structures shall be paid 50% by the city and not, and not especially assessed with the remaining 50% to the tax assessed to the benefits of the landowners." Okay? I have a question for you. Mr. Phelan, Mr. Gostad, who owns that property right now that, that exists out there that is next to my property? Is that owned by Fufang currently? Okay, go ahead.
Are you referring to the Stormwater Pond, Mr. Spicer?
Yes, I am. The property that the Stormwater Pond is on and the property that it exists around.
And the city owns that Stormwater Pond.
Okay, what about the rest of the property? Does Fufang still own that? Is that Chinese-owned property?
My understanding is Fufang still owns the remaining greenfield development.
Okay. If they still own that property, why do they not have to pay for that pond like the rest of us existing property owners out there?
They will be assessed for their share of the pond.
Okay, it doesn't say that in that agreement.
They, they are...
Was that all this covered in the development agreement?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't see it in there.
It's, it's in the, it's in the spreadsheets about what their cost share is.
Okay. Couple of questions here, and then I'll try to get done. Twenty seconds. Come on. What is the plan for Fufang land? Is the current property going to be taxed equally as the rest of us highway-owned businesses?
It's, it's taxed as industrial land.
Industrial land. The city has a legal obligation to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayer money. When and if presents, when Fufang presents a lawsuit against the city, who's going to cover those costs?
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Mr. Gostad, that's your question, I'm sure.
Mr. Gostad, if you'd like to respond, please.
Is there a lawsuit coming from Fufang? Have you even spoken to them?
Mr. Spicer, could you give him a second to respond, please? Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Gostad, if you'd like to respond to that, please.
I have not spoken to Fufang.
You have not spoken to them?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spicer.
I'm not done.
Your time's finished, Mr. Spicer. Please sit down.
I'm not done.
Mr. Spicer, you've been asked. Please sit down. Your time is completed.
Did you know that the city was going to buy land back from Fufang when you voted to approve the development agreement? Yes or no?
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Yes or no? I'll let you know when I'm done. I'm sick of you ordering me around. This is my right. This is my First Amendment right. You guys dreamed this five minutes up on your own? It's a crock.
Mr. Spicer, when you're...
It's time to answer some questions.
When you're in this chamber, you will follow the rules.
We've been wrangled around long enough, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Spicer, when you're in this chamber, you will follow the rules that we have set forth. Please sit down.
You're a disgrace to this city.
You can say as you wish. Please sit down, sir.
Yep. You do not represent this city. We voted in, and we will vote you out.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. Ma'am, please stop disrupting the meeting, please. Thank you.
That was time perfect.
Mr. Cadillac, please.
Mr. Truth Bolczynski. Have you seen my latest show on No Apologies? You know, that's a perfect example on how you operate. 180 degrees apart on two different interviews. You know, you're not ever going to come up with the truth, because once you start lying, you can't stop. And that's how it works. You've tried to deceive us, but you've deceived yourself. You've deceived yourself in believing you're going to walk away with this unscathed. That is not going to happen, because you have been investigated, and you're still being investigated. You know, we threw you a bone a month ago to help yourselves out, but you refused to because you're obstinate and you will not listen. And you know, I told Mr. Gostad months ago that he's a smart man, he can figure it out, but evidently, I was wrong about that, too, because he hasn't figured it out. And I don't think he's ever gonna. And as far as what's going on with you guys, you can figure it out. You want to follow the rules? Do you remember the page I handed to Rebecca here a month ago? I emailed it to you. It come from Matt, Street Department, December 9th, about a sidewalk that hasn't been cleaned, and Sherry, it's still not cleaned. Follow the rules? Why does not the city of Grand Forks follow the rules? Why does not Mayor Bolczynski follow the rules? Why does not Dan Gostad follow the rules? You know, this web you guys have created, you got your pictures up on the wall, and lines running back and forth in between the EDC and all these other places. It's just amazing. I mean, there's so much conflict, the interest here is just oozing out. I mean, Gostad works on both sides of fence. He works for the city and he works for Fufang. You know, why'd you get rid of Howard Swanson? Because Howard Swanson would not do what Dan Gostad's willing to do. And this guy, he should have been gone a long time ago. If you're going to do your job, Mr. Mayor, do your job, please. Lead, follow, or get out of the way. But I'll tell you what, if you're going to be a leader, you need to get rid of that council, because that council has really gotten you in deep. You need to get rid of this director, because he's even dug you deeper. You need to get rid of these other people that cannot do the menial job of setting a clock or even getting a sidewalk cleaned. I first complained on that sidewalk December 9th. Could you give me a good reason why it is not cleaned to this day? Anybody? December 9th, I complained about a sidewalk that is not clean. Call the police station, they'll tell you. You call and you complain to the city. The rules are, you report it to the city, and the city makes sure it gets cleaned. If the owner don't clean it, then somebody's hired to clean it, and the city bills them double for it. That hasn't been done. Why not? December 9th, Mr. Mayor! And you expect us to believe you? Come on! You know, you haven't told the truth since the day I got here, and I told you that very day that I didn't believe you were going to be honest and up above board. And the guy hiding behind the screen there was the first guy to jump up and say that I could not be satisfied, but yes, I could be satisfied. Some people need to be fired, and some people need to resign. And you know, Brandon, if you want to show yourself as an example at all, you'll either resign, or you'll start firing the people you've got to get rid of here. And you'll start running a city like a city should be run, for the people, not for yourself. And these pilot programs, duh. Do you really think they haven't figured those out already? I mean, look at where things are. And half this stuff, if I can find it out, can you imagine what these three-letter outfits, and there's nine of them? What they can figure out? They can go in the records, I can't. But, you know, and you're not from here, Brandon. You're not from here. You're from Blaine, Minnesota. Don't say you come back to Grand Forks, because you never came from here. And if you did, I'll tell you what, I'd go get positions to sign to expunge that. You guys have just literally destroyed this city. I mean, it's an embarrassment. The whole country knows about this. And don't kid yourself. And you know, for the few of you that were pushing Fufang, there were thousands that were against it. And even Kramer come honestly out with that. But you know, once you start lying, you can't stop. So please, continue.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cadillac.
Mayor, on that sidewalk, I did go back and ask Ms. Lippsh from Public Works, and she asserted that that sidewalk has been cleared.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you.
That sidewalk still ain't been cleaned, because I drove by it before I come here. So stop lying.
Mr. Cadillac, please, your time's completed. Please, stop disrupting. Thank you.
Michael Coachman.
My time's completed when the Lord decides.
Mr. Coachman, please.
You're out of order.
Hello, Mayor and City Council.
This whole city's not ordered.
I have a couple of questions. Actually, I have a lot of questions. What is the status, or did the city ever have that $3 million that the county gave
I don't believe the funds have been moved. Mr. Phelan, are you aware?
They haven't. The, the request is there. We have not followed up on, on the $3 million, but we intend to do that in the future, working through the county.
Reason is because...
You speak up against police.
Go ahead, repeat that again. Can you hold that since that's tied?
The $3 million of ARPA funds are set aside for the city. We have not followed up with the county at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Coachman, please, continue.
The reason I ask, because it keeps in your conversations that the money was already here. So I just wanted to clarify that, because... So I just wanted to clarify that because then Ross from the county said they're not going to give them money and they never gave them money. So I just wanted to make sure of that. Question, Mr. Mayor, is did Governor Burgum come down or his office or his people to ask you to accelerate the purchase of Fu Fang land?
No.
No, at any time?
No.
Okay. So at no time that you or anybody else or Mr. Gosted or anybody in the City Council were they encouraged to expedite the purchase of Fu Fang land? Were you aware of, Mr.?
I don't even know what your question is. Your question is...
Were you asked to expedite the land purchase of Fu Fang?
I had nothing to do with the land purchase.
Okay, nothing? No? Who did?
The company worked with their attorneys and with the landowners. That's been clearly stated multiple times, Mr. Coachman.
Well, somebody has to pull them together so for those one orders to attorneys to get together. That's what I was asking. That's all. Okay.
Mr. Spicer, please, there's another person using their time. Please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. One thing is I know you just take a lot of notes and I had some requests the last time here in the City Council, I never got a response.
Are you referring to your comments on Bridget Reineking?
Correct.
And so your assertion is that she's an agent of the Chinese government, the Army Intelligence Officer, Mrs. Reineking?
I've never said that.
What is your assertion, I guess?
The question was, who brought Bridget or what's her name, together to the law firms? What caused your law firm to contact her law firm? Who was the third party? What was her, who introduced Bridget to the Grand Forks City Council? This was my question.
I think the answer's pretty simple. Mr. Gosted reached out to four or five different firms. There was two firms that responded. He interviewed the two firms that responded and selected that firm and they chose Mrs. Reineking as their lead attorney.
So you only choose, looked at five firms, Mr. Gosted?
I don't know, I think it was four or five firms that we reached out to.
And did you do a research on these companies?
I believe we did.
Did you know that there was, they had satellite law firms in China?
No, I was not.
It's right there on the website. I found that out just going to the website. So...
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Hey, at least somebody's doing something.
He just missed out.
So you went to, hmm, wow, that's amazing that you could even find that on the website. So and who introduced you to Bridget at the law firm? How did you come to know her? Because that company's quite large.
She reached out to us after we contacted them.
One other question, I know some of the members here are on the BRIC, Bracey realignment. Mr. Mayor, are they going to still stay on there as far as since they have a major conflict of interest there and they're not representing the base? Are those people going to stay on?
Which people are you referring to and what conflict of interest, Mr. Coachman? And your time's completed, so please finish that.
A couple of guys that are there. If you want, Mr. Sandy, he's on the BRIC committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coachman.
Hey, Mr. Matt.
Yeah?
I think it's important to point out to Mr. Coachman that if it weren't for Mr. Sandy being on the BRIC, Grand Sky wouldn't exist today. So you're welcome for me helping bring that to our community.
Well, Mr. Sandy, why I was asking is because even though that may be so, the interest of the fact that you are not looking for the best interests of the Grand Forks Air Force Base bewilders me. So are you really helping the base by staying on and bringing some company that is a security violation to the base?
Mr. Coachman, thank you for the question. I think those are two separate issues.
No, they're the same.
I think I'd have proven and I think you can speak with other people that are on the BRIC or you're welcome to contact the base yourself. I think you will hear overwhelmingly that I've been incredibly supportive of our Grand Forks Air Force Base over my 12 years serving. And as we had proven, as we have proven, the minute we found out that there was a national security issue, we pulled the plug. So I think we are acting most definitely in our Air Force Base's best interest. Thank you for your time, Mr. Coachman.
Mr. Coachman, your time's completed.
I want to do a follow-up on that.
There's not, this is not a deposition. Your time is completed, sir.
No, it's not.
Please sit down and respect the rules that we set for.
I am, sir. I just want to do a follow-up on that.
Thank you, Mr. Coachman. You can follow up with them anytime you wish. Please sit down, sir.
Oh, being on BRIC, you think you would have known what person to go to before...
Jason Patrick.
Mr. Patrick, please.
Now, remember the rules this week, all week.
Mr. Cadillac, please stop disrupting the meeting. Thank you, sir. Mr. Patrick, please.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, fellow citizens, those watching in the DC metro Firstly, I would like to... Can you hear me? Do you have me five by five now? Fantastic. Okay, first I would like to applaud publicly Mr. Corey Wenzel for doing the right thing in terms of eliminating potential conflicts of interest. It's my hope that his example will serve as a standard candle for others who may find themselves in situations that could create conflicts of interest. That's a big thing that we deal with today. To the city, I once again urge you to take ownership of our struggle with Fu Fang issue. Since the Air Force sent their letter of their concerns to our senators, it has been a constant shifting of responsibility to parties as well as to try and save political face by saying it wasn't political pressure, it was our development agreement, not political pressure, that got us to end things. I would say that without that political pressure, as some would call it, we wouldn't be at where we are today with having stopped a potential national security threat from setting up in our backyard. So just own it. Just own it and give apologies where apologies are due. Take ownership where ownership is due. When seeking guidance, you sought a hired consultant rather than going to the one person at the Pentagon who you probably needed to talk to and were cleared hot to engage with. I emailed you all his contact info and there were two people on this council who actually took the time to do that. One person, I believe, said, "I'm not going to do that if he's not going to talk to me. Why bother?" After Ms. Sowsky had given an update saying, "I've tried to reach out to this person, they weren't able to speak to me at that time." That's a big difference, saying, "I'm not able to speak at this time" versus "they don't have time to talk to me." It's a very busy organization up there with a lot of irons in the fire. So they don't always have the time right then to drop everything and call you. Give them some wiggle room. But you didn't call him. You called a hired consultant. Called a hired consultant. And you didn't take seriously the statements of the representative from the base who was at the BRIC meeting expressing issues with breaches of trust or integrity between the base and the community. Reached out again to a paid representative who has no connection to the Air Force at this point in their life, no official connection, other than drawing a retirement check from the Defense Accounting and Financing Services as contractor, rather than talking to the person who could have actually gotten you some good information and told you where things stood. You didn't do that. You said, and I believe it was specifically you said, and I may have to paraphrase just a tad, "But I thought that was incorrect, so I reached out to our people at the Pentagon." Our people at the Pentagon. You didn't trust the opinion of the person who has shop set up in your backyard and has, in terms of shop set up, since 1954. I would just say, maybe we need to think a little harder about how we do things and our opinions on where some of that information is coming from. And with that, I yield the rest of my 35, 34, 33 seconds to whoever comes after me. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
And last comment I have for tonight, Ben Graduleski.
Mr. Graduleski, please.
Good evening. I just have a couple of questions. Have you guys looked into maybe somehow regaining control of the land as Ms. Sowsky brought up at the last meeting?
We'll see. I mean, the states are working on some things right now. Again, that's out. The city has no land control authority to seize land from anybody.
Okay, have you verified that, though?
That the city can't take someone's land?
National, I mean, as a national, considering that it's a national security risk.
Well, since the national security entity, ACFS, didn't move forward with it, it'd be difficult for us to, probably. So true, Mr. Gosted?
eminent domain doesn't allow us to start taking property.
Okay, just curious. Also, I was curious, have you guys been able to collect on that line of credit?
I think that's ongoing, so they're getting everything together to submit probably in the next week or two.
Okay, and will we be able to see some documentation then when that's all set up and done?
Yeah, I think it'll be a public document, so yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graduleski. All right, item three, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. We did move 3.1 forwards. We have 3.2.
We'll move on to 3.2, proclamation, Freedom Week, February 19th through 25th.
Thank you. Freedom Week, February 19th to the 25th, 2023. Whereas Saratoma International, a civic organization, the motto which is "Service to Mankind", has adopted a Freedom Week program dedicated to the reemphasis of the values and the responsibilities of people in a free society. And whereas Saratoma International has promoted the distribution of copies of the Declaration of Independence throughout its entire membership of clubs, and whereas the Greater Grand Forks Saratoma Club is planning to carry out special patriotic and civic activities during the 2023 Freedom Week, and whereas it seems proper and fitting to accord official recognition to this patriotic movement. Now, therefore, I, Brandon Bochinsky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim and designate February 19th to the 25th, 2023 as Freedom Week and urge citizens to support the objectives of this week.
And 3.3 is a legislative update.
We got that. Is Mr. Bernstrom involved as well?
Mayor Bochinsky, Mr. Bernstrom had an engagement this evening with his kids, so you have me this evening. So just want to provide you a few updates. Number one, on the prairie dog, you know, one of the requests we have from the city of Grand Forks and other cities is that we can move our funding bucket in advance of SEF, which is the state investment infrastructure fund. Currently, right now, the state has determined that we're going to remain in our same position, so we're going to remain after, due to the current legislation, after the $400 million SEF bucket. And I think some of the concern at the state is certainly oil revenues are up, but this has been a one-biennium thing. And so I think there's a sense currently right now, and that might change as we move through, but right now is to keep us where we're at in the bucket and maybe have a longer track record of, in lieu of moving us forward in the bucket sooner rather than later. So that's one bit of news as we have. We continue to monitor the highway bill through the state of North Dakota. And so there's several buckets that we're looking at for the 47th Avenue interchange and also the 42nd to Merz Avenue underpass. And then finally, there is a kind of final road for industry, specifically agri-business. They've set some funds aside. So we're certainly looking at that for not only the greenfield site where we worked on the Fu Fang property, but also with the epitome energy development. Also want to provide you some good news on the Senate Bill 2020. Mayor Bochinsky and Mahoney and Dartis testified this early on in the session. And so some good news is that the Senate has moved that forward in a unanimous way. And so that particular bill will have $175 million for Red River Valley water supply. It does have legislative intent for a 75-25 cost share and on that particular area. So that's good news for the city of Grand Forks and our colleagues in the Southern Valley. Also want to point out that bill also contains $38 million in municipal water supply and that's a funding bucket. We have access for the water treatment plant and other water distribution projects. And then finally, there's $12 million in general water funding. And as you have approved some of the south end drainage study, we are going to ask to access some of those funds for some of our stormwater drainage as it relates to our flood protection project. So there's a few buckets that we're going to access. And on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, that's good news that we got legislative intent. Right now, the proposed with that 175 million, the governor put in 170, so it's $5 million more. They're going to wait till March 16th occurs. That's when the next economic forecast comes from the state of North Dakota. They anticipate the revenues will be up. And so that may include more revenues that will go into the various water buckets to include the Red River Valley water supply bucket. So that's good news. I think once the session is over, you will see a partnership agreement, project partnership agreement, that will be in front of you that will move forward with the specifics in working with these various cost shares. One thing we're looking at is that we are still asking for the bank in North Dakota to help fund our 25% cost share at a 40-year, 2% loan rate. So that's yet to be, to come, but that's good news that that project is moving forward. And you know, the request has been to a 68-year bill, but right now we're at a 10-year bill, but obviously the project's moving forward. Also want to point out regarding foreign investment and again, working with the Senate and the House on some bills regarding foreign investment, both the House and the Senate have worked diligently with Grand Forks and areas across the state on painting a lot less rot of a brush. And in this case, that will allow CERIS to continue to remain in Grand Forks and also to grow in Grand Forks. So that's a big deal. They have put in language where if a company is duly registered and maintain a good standing and with the Secretary of State for seven years or longer, you'll be excluded. Number two, if you've received approval for the Committee of Foreign Direct Investment in the United States or CFS and maintain an active national security agreement with the federal government. So those are three requirements that CERIS asks for. And so I mean, thanks to the good work of CERIS and others, we feel like they've really told a positive story about what they've done here in Grand Forks and that'll allow them to continue to invest in our community. So with that, Mayor, I'd stand for any questions. And again, Mr. Weber is our chair and we've been meeting on an ongoing basis every Friday afternoon.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Weber, did you have anything to add or does anybody else have a question? I'll start with you, Mr. Weber, please.
Mr. Bernstrom brings a sportscaster's vibrancy to these reports that Mr. Phelan may have lacked, but otherwise, a nice, clear, concise summary of some of the key bills of the approximately 100 that we're following in the session. Thanks, Tom.
Yep, thank you. And I believe, Mr. Veen, are you planning to go out to Grand Forks today? I think we'll have at least one or two council members out there. I don't know if anyone else was planning, but next week, Thursday and Friday, you're going to be there, Mr. Veen?
I'm open to do that, yes.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any other questions for Mr. Phelan?
We've got a great itinerary and Mayor Bochinsky will lead our group there. And so we have several meetings with all the various department heads to include the governor and the lieutenant governor. So it should be a, it should be a good week for us to brief.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Moving on to public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
4.1 is public hearing and second reading of ordinance dedicating right of way in final approval of the plat of Corinta Lem 63 subdivision located between 4,900 and 5,400 blocks of 17th Avenue North.
Thank you. Open up the public hearing. Anybody here today to speak on item 4.1? All right, we'll see no one, we'll close the public hearing period and then open up for any comments, questions, or motions from the council.
I'm of approval.
Second?
Got a motion from Vice President Weber, second from President Sandy. Any further discussion on item 4.1? discussion on item four point one? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Four point two, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to annex portions of Corinna Lem six-three subdivision to the city of Grand Forks.
All right, same procedure here. Open up public hearing. Any wish to speak on item four point two? All right, public hearing period will be closed. Open the council for comment, motions, please.
We have approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comment on item four point two? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Four point three, public hearing and second reading of ordinance and final approval of rezoning of fourteen oh one Dyke Avenue from I-one Light Industrial to North Dakota Coffee Roastery Micro PUD.
All right, same procedure. Anybody here to speak on item four point three? All right, seeing none. Public hearing period is closed.
We have approval.
Oh, we got, Mr. Veen stepped in, so we got a motion from Mr. Veen. Do anybody else in the House that would like to second that?
Second.
We got a second from Ms. Lunskey. Oh, a little too late, Mr. Weigle. We got a motion and a second. Any further comments on item four point three? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're on to five action items. I don't think administratively we had any that we particularly needed to pull, so it'll open up the council. There's some items they wanted to pull for further discussion or separate votes. This time, give a, give a minute here. Mr. Veen?
Five seventeen.
Five seventeen. Can I get that one pulled? And Mr. Brooks, you be prepared to speak on five seventeen. Be yourself ready. Any other items? All right, so we'd look to move on item five point one, five point two, five point three, five point four, five point five, five point six, five point seven, five point eight, five point nine, five point ten, five point eleven, five point twelve, five point thirteen, five point fourteen, five point fifteen, and five point sixteen.
We have approval.
Got a motion to approve. We got a second. We got a second from Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So we'll be on to five seventeen.
Five seventeen, introduce ordinance to preliminary approval of amendment to the zoning map to approve day HUD PUD, amendment number two for twenty-eight hundred South Columbia Road.
All right, this is the introduction of the act. Why don't you give us a little bit more? I know we had a, a, a small conversation on this, but I think this would be a good one to kind of go over a little bit more for the council.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. So what's going on here is Red River Christian School has been working with the owners of the old Macy's, and currently the zoning is PUD, allows for shopping center district uses. Within that list of uses, does not include a school. And so at this time, they're asking for the potential for a school to go there as well. So we did discuss, they do have a concept plan that they've submitted to our staff. It's included in the staff report. One of the things we've looked at is safety and how to segregate as much as we could the traffic, the play areas, security screening, those types of things from the surrounding property. It's not that unusual, actually, as we start to look at some other big box areas. So this is a, some things that have been done in some other communities as well. It's not probably the ideal, you know, we'd like to go back to, to having big boxes. It's just not there right now. This has sat empty for a long time. I do think the use can bring some activity to that area. They, being a private school, they did like the, I think, the access, I believe, in that area. They've worked very hard up to this point, and they know that they'll still have to work with the mall owners as well and some of the other tenants in that area. There's a real estate agreement that they'll still have to clear to get into that area as well. So there's a lot of things that they are looking at. Green space is one, that they would deconstruct some of the parking there because they, they're overparked. The mall itself is overparked. They could certainly build on some of those lots, but specifically if a school goes there versus a hundred thousand square foot of retail property, there's substantial overparking there to, to turn it into a school. So it is an adaptive reuse that they're looking at there, and it's, it's something that we're having to look at. So that's kind of a quick base. Next steps, just so you're aware, final PNZ approval is March one. That's where we actually, we have notices mailed out now, and the public will be able to comment. We notified eight hundred feet around the property, and then it'll be before you next month for final approval.
And thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Veen, did you have?
Yeah, you know, fundamentally, I'm not against this. It just, it's a significant change in zoning. I mean, this type of a zoning modification probably has great merit. It's just, I, I just think philosophically, we as a community are making a major shift in the utilization of retail space when we do this, especially as a part of the mall. And I think it just is worthy of good conversation.
Yeah.
To see how we go forward. I know the mayor, Todd, have been trying to get this developed for a long time. You've made several visits to Chicago or whatever to, to try to spur something. I mean, it isn't, there hasn't been effort so far. This may be what we consider now Plan B. That's probably where it's going. I just don't know then how that impacts the rest of the development and what the meaning is to do that. And so I just, I just think that's worthy of conversation.
Yep. Thank you for bringing that up, because some of the other things that we're looking at is traffic, too, and how that'll move in and out of that area. But definitely it's sat empty for a long time. They haven't been able to come up with anything. We would have loved for something else to go in there, even breaking up that space into smaller retail, but the mall has lots of other areas still to do that as well. So that's kind of where we're at, unfortunately, with the mall, so.
And the, the, the area that's highlighted here, that's the actual property lines, right, that, that are within the, what I would call the Dayton's development?
Yeah, Dayton's. So, yeah, it's, it's a little unusual in that it is jagged, and that's, that's, that was set up with those property lines long ago. And the, the reason that the, they've set it up that way, the jagged lines, is so that initially they were attempting to make the Dayton's property whole with their parking needs at that time, and then to split them up accordingly. I think they still all have a shared maintenance, those types of things, because the ring road's still out there and, and how they all have to pay for that and share in that.
Yeah. So, and, and as far as playgrounds and other, I mean, some of that pavement would be gone, maybe, and reconfigured, and that type of a site plan, does that come back?
Yeah, it wouldn't come back to, to you, but they have provided that as a concept. They're looking to put that on the west side there, would be where their playground equipment would be from that main entrance, which would be facing to the south, towards Ground Round McDonald's area. And then they're looking at a, a little bit smaller football field area that would be to the east as well, taking out a, a lot of parking for both of those green spaces. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Yep, President Sandy, please.
I think it's important to point out that, you know, this school is currently located in East Grand Forks, and they're talking about coming to our community to a facility that's completely underutilized and making a massive investment in our town. I think, I think we should be quick to be thankful that they're interested in being here. And I certainly think it's going to be great for our community. And I think based upon what's happening in malls all over the country where you're getting mixed use, like apartments mixed with retail, mixed with others, I think this is a perfect use of that facility. And so I'm certainly prepared to move a crew.
All right, we got a, is that a motion, President Sandy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion. We got a second for Ms. Osowski. Did I jump you again, Mr. Weigle? All right. All right, any further discussion on item four point three?
Five point one seven.
Or sorry, five point one seven. It's been a long day. All right, we got a motion and a second on item five point one seven. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, let me get back to the front here. All right, so let's move on to item six, information items.
Six point one, investment portfolio summary as of January thirty-first.
All right, thank you. And item seven, approval of minutes and bills.
Seven point one is the vendor's list and engineer's estimate, as is attached.
All right, Mr. Weigle, would you like to motion to approval of the vendor list?
Aye.
All right. Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigle. Got a second from Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Seven point two, minutes from September nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
All right, we got a motion to approve the minutes. Everyone looked at those. Got a motion to approve from Ms. Lunskey. We have a second. Anybody want to second the minutes?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Veen seconded. Too many people on the Zoom tonight. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Phelan, any comments this evening?
Yeah, I do. Mayor Bochensky, members of the city council, as the mayor highlighted, we're going to be at the Hive next week and thereafter for several months. And so we'll give you, we'll give you a primer on what we're planning on doing, and there may be a couple of locations to start with that we're going to meet at, at that particular building as we move forward. So not all the technology and all the finishes are, are complete, but we'll be able to meet over there, and over time, we'll get, some of the technology will get more and more up so we can meet in different areas in that particular building. Also wanted to highlight, we are planning to have two joint meetings, one, the quality of life feasibility study. We, we anticipate having another joint meeting with your colleagues from the Park District, likely in March, April, and, and that will have finalized cost estimates on the capital, but will also importantly include some of the operating costs that you had asked for at the previous meeting, along with some of the other revenues, you know, sponsorships, naming rights, and those sorts of things. So I know the Park District is leading that. We're obviously a prime sponsor, but that will be coming your way. So I would, if you want to look at your next two months, what we're going to be working on, that'll be in front of you as part of a joint meeting. Number two, Mr. Strandell was here on behalf of the Honor Flight. His other day job is he's a Polk County Commissioner, and he did whisper in my ear that they did, the Polk County did approve their share of the rivers crossings agreement, so that's good.
We will.
I'm going to go to the next county, future county commission meeting to ask them to pay for their, the fourth and final share of that. And then at that point, what the counties have asked, along with East Grand Forks, is that there would be a, a, a four-part meeting. So we've never done a four-part meeting, so that would be with Polk, Grand Forks Counties, East Grand Forks and, and Grand Fork City. And so I anticipate, once that gets approved, probably in the March, April timeframe, and you're going to have a, a collaborative group meeting with them and, and working through that river crossings and make sure everybody's on the same page on those, on the river crossings. So that's upcoming. The other thing we, we're starting to work on with Dennis Egan and the Epitome Energy team is the development agreement. So I anticipate you having a draft development agreement also in the March, April timeframe. It'll look similar to the Foo Fong Development Agreement as we move forward. So we're pretty practiced on those, on those things. It'll be a different project, but it'll have a lot of similarities to it. So I would anticipate that starting in the March, April timeframe. And certainly, we'd ask for you to approve that so that we can start working on all the various due diligence items, and, and Mr. Egan and his team will have a further understanding what their roadmap is to move their project forward. With that, thanks for all you do on behalf of the city of Grand Forks, the city council mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. We'll go on to number nine, mayor and council member comments. Mr. Weigle, you still there? Any comments, sir? No. Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
Yes, I have lots of comments.
Please.
First of all, I thought the Honor Flight was very interesting. I guess I didn't know that they did that, and so thank you to all our veterans. And as one of them stated, freedom is not free. So, thank you. Let me see here. You know, there have been a lot of citizen comments brought up about the intermingling of the city and the EDC and how there may be conflicts of interest. I really do think that there needs to be a very clear line between the city and the EDC, and also the EDC and the other committees. I mean, I sit on the Growth Fund also, and I believe, like the citizen stated, there are two members from the EDC on that. And so they come up, present, and, yeah, I, I think there needs to be some clear lines drawn there. And you said that the sidewalk was cleared, Mr. Phelan? Okay, that's great.
I did, I, I would should say, Ms. Lips did say that they had cleared it. So I know we talked a couple of weeks tonight, and we discussed it, and we just said, just do it.
Okay.
And I think there was a conflict with the Park District, and when in doubt, Public Works just does it. So she confirmed that we did do that.
Okay, good. Thank you so much for following up on that. I do think that we need to have more Foo Fang updates, maybe weekly, you know, just kind of discuss the progress, like, have they left U and D yet? Is their stuff out of storage at this point? I would like to know the answers to those questions and get updates on that weekly until it is done. I have, I have a lot of concerns about us as a city continuing to pay the DEPTU group five thousand dollars a month. Obviously, he did not steer us, or that group did not steer us in the right direction for us to get shut down, or for Foo Fang to get shut down by the Air Force. So I think that that is something that we need to seriously look at, maybe find someone else that would do a little bit better of a job. And also, I would like to know, like, what does happen to the land? What are our options as a city? Because Foo Fang does own all that land. So is there anything that we can do, Mr. Gosted, about that, or is?
If you're asking to confiscate somebody else's property, I don't think we have the authority to confiscate somebody's property.
I did not ask if we could confiscate their property. I just asked if there is anything we can do. Can we encourage them to sell it to someone else? I, I mean, that's what I'm kind of asking. So maybe I could get some of those options, or maybe someone could have a talk with them. I, are they still getting tax breaks?
With the termination of the agreement, the pilot agreement would go away as well.
Okay, so they will not get the tax breaks. What happens to the land?
Mr. Gosted, if I could ask, regarding the pilot, regarding the land, is that, was always going to be fully taxable? It's just a building, right?
Correct. The land is the only, the land continues to be taxed as a normal, had there been construction, and in fact, the pilot agreement required that the pilot wouldn't be implemented until the building was substantially completed, and the building won't be substantially completed. So the pilot won't kick in. Plus, we're going to be terminating the agreement as well, so.
Okay. How likely are we to get our money back, you know, with the, what, the five million dollars, and we've spent three point three, correct?
The, the amount of money that's been expended, I believe, is, the last I saw is in number about three point four million.
Yeah.
I think some of that money is subject to special assessment. That wouldn't be subject to recovery through the letter of credit.
Okay.
Letter of credit is, we have to present a request for payment. I don't have the letter of credit right in front of me, but as I understand it, my memory serves me, they have seven days to honor the letter of credit, the, the bank. So we're not making a request to Foo Fang. We'd be making a request to the bank that issued the letter of credit in favor of the city.
Okay. When will we be able to do that?
I'll be drafting correspondence in the next week or two to both Foo Fang and the bank, and that regard.
Okay, so maybe we can get an update on that next week also, just make sure. I think that it's a good question, like, was the city aware that they would need to buy back this land from Foo Fang to build this pond? I, to me, it just seems a little wonky that they would buy all this land, and then the city would come in and buy part of it just to put a pond. And so was the city aware that they would need this land to build a pond?
Yes. It was a term of the development agreement that, that called for the city to purchase a portion of the property that they had acquired for the purposes of constructing the stormwater pond.
Okay.
Todd, does the city own all of the stormwater ponds in the city that they're constructing?
Generally do. We, any of the regional ponds, we do own, so it's similar to what we're doing in, on the south end with Grand Valley, is where that storm pond's being built, we'll own that. And so, around town, we generally own all those. And I was just doing the math from last week's, and again, there's probably more costs that will get added. But if you look at where we're at with Foo Fang USA Dedicated Projects, I think the summary we had was three point three nine nine, however, one point two plus related to the storm pond, that would be special assess to Foo Fang. So you're probably at, like, that.
would be special assess to Foo Fang, so you're probably at like that $2.1 million if you want to just say, related to the letter of credit per se.
Okay, Ms. Osowski, please. Continue.
Also, I saw, I guess I'll stick with the deannexation first. How, how long legally do we as a city have to provide the annexed area with the services?
I don't think there's a particular timeframe, but we have, we do have an obligation, I mean, I don't think there's any statute that says it's got to end within a certain timeframe. There's obviously, you have to use reason and the ability to construct some infrastructure, but we do have, when we annex, we do have an obligation to provide services to the annexed area like you would provide to any other area in the city.
But there's no timeframe?
Not that I'm aware of, as to any specific timeframe, but I mean, I don't think you can wait and do nothing.
Could you look into that, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Also, I did watch the committee of the whole meeting last week where they talked about, you know, the petition needing to be signed to get the deannexation. Are there any other options? Or is that the only way that we can get a deannex?
I suppose the city council could initiate on its own some motion if they wanted to.
Okay.
Mayor Butensky, if I could just highlight, you have approved at previous meetings to move forward with bidding of the sanitary sewer collection system in that domestic wastewater home station. You've also indicated to move forward bidding of the drinking water system, that would also include the fire protection for our department. So when those come through, they'll likely come through, I think they're going to get bid, and I suspect they'll be back here in the March, April timeframe with those bids, and once you accept those, that means that construction's going to move forward in this, in the Highway 81 area, and so those are going to be important notes that I want to point out to you as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I guess the last comment that I have is I feel that non-elected people shouldn't be on the dais, and I think that they should be seated back over there. So that's just my opinion, I think it's something that we should look into. I know before Foo Fang, you weren't sitting up here, Mr. Gosted, you would sit down there. So I do think, can I motion for that?
Here, I got one better for you. During COVID, they went back down there, and for the past, I don't know how many years they've been up here, but the new remodel does not have them on the dais, so.
Okay.
Tonight will be the last night that they're up here, so we will approve that, your request immediately, Ms. Osowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that is all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weber, any comments this evening?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has long been proud of its innovative economic development efforts and the city's open-for-business reputation. I was chair of the Growth Fund Committee when we expanded the size of that committee to include additional citizen input. The Ottoman Society is a wonderful group, but it's ludicrous to suggest that they would have the same credibility or even value and utility as Economic Development Corporation board members to serve on the city's economic development committee. Indeed, we're fortunate to have the subject experts that we have who are willing to donate their time and expertise for the common good at no gain for themselves. It's ironic that at the height of our city's economic development success, with residential and industrial growth, with over a billion dollars in project development going on in our city, it's ironic that a small group has successfully portrayed those efforts as either corrupt or harmful. Some investigative journalism should be engaged to take a closer look at some of the specious claims that we've heard every other week for the last year now. We as a city should be proud of how we emerged from the pandemic in such a dynamically, financially successful manner. Beyond that, other than for a brief period during the pandemic, the dais has been occupied by the city attorney, Howard Swanson, there were always city staff on the dais as well. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Ms. Lunskey, comments this evening?
I just wanted to mention that I had the privilege of seeing the new remodel at the library of the children's department. It's, they're putting in over a million dollars in the remodel, and it's very exciting, so that's all.
Thank you. We got, is Mr. Karami online? All right, Mr. Veen, any comments?
Just a couple. You know, after we've gone through all the issues we have with Foo Fang, I have been working myself at what lessons I maybe personally learned through this process to maybe see how we could do better, and what we didn't do, and what we did do good. I mean, I think there's, there's two sides to that. I really would like to see us at some time do some after-action summary that includes a lot of documentation. Mr. Phelan, you brought out a lot of things last week that has, gives us some, a bit of a snapshot of where we are, but it seemed like any time you go through something of this significance, we should be able to take a look back and know what worked well, what didn't work well, and be able to put some type of post or after-action summary that might be able to look forward to. Mr. Phelan, you've talked about the development agreement as we go forward. I learned a lot about this development agreement, I think there's recommendations I'd have as we would ever look forward to future, and would love to work within internally to at least bring those things forward. So I just see that there are some of those, and would like to somehow see some type of summary to look at, at the things that I've just stated, and there's probably a number of others which I did not state that would be of value, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Veen, I think you make some great points. Obviously, with the Epidemic Energy, we're going to have another development agreement on the heels that is going to need to be worked on sooner rather than later. President Sandy, any comments this evening?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I think it's important to, to note that it seems relatively obvious that there's a disconnect between the general public and their understanding of what the Economic Development Corporation and what their charter and purpose is for our community. I think it's, people should know that this is our Economic Development Corporation. Having yourself, having city of Grand Forks representation on the Economic Development Corporation is purposeful, because we're supposed to be hearing in advance and understanding and helping setting, set the tone for what the Economic Development Corporation is doing for our community. I think it would, it would be good perhaps for us to have Mr. Lund come in brief on what the purpose of the, of the Economic Development Corporation is, the relationship, the actual purposeful relationship between the city and the EDC, and how we closely work together. I think that would, it would be good education for our citizens, because obviously, Mr. Perkins, I think, although I do believe that his intentions are well, I just don't think he understands the, what the purpose of the EDC is, so. And he obviously isn't the only person in our community, because there are people that just obviously don't understand it. So if we could make that arrangement, I think that'd be great, otherwise, appreciate, appreciate everyone's work on everything, and everything they've done tonight, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, President Sandy. I got one comment before you get there, I get my comment. Just want to thank everyone for coming tonight and speaking, appreciate, it's not always easy, those can be tough at times, but I appreciate everyone's willingness to come and to talk, and wanted to give an invitation to any of the council members, as demolition starts here, if you want to throw on some safety glasses and swing a hammer or two, they probably could find a way to make that happen as they look to start demolishing the chambers here over the next couple of weeks. With that, I wish everyone a good week, and until next time, signing off from this dais for the last time, because the chamber's getting torn down. Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn, there, Ms. Osowski, the motion, we got a second from Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we are adjourned.
Good night.